We will now convene as the Planning Commission, implication by Mr. Dr. Clujay, and I'll do the pledge.
Lord, once again.
Mr. Burgard?
Here.
Dr. Clujay? Dr. Clujay?
Here.
Ms. Ellender?
Here.
Mr. Falk?
Here.
Mr. Lainer?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Soudier?
Here.
Mr. Thibodeau?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Conflicts disclosure or non-commissioners anytime tonight. A conflict of interest arises or is recognized to any issue during a meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and is to recuse himself or herself from participating in debate, discussion, and voting on the matter. Any member have anything to disclose at this time? Seeing none, hearing none. Item D, acceptance of the minutes. Moved by Mr. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Ellender. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, let me put your light on, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The, right at the beginning, the A, it says Vice Chair, Mr. Kyle Falk, and that's what I meant by you weren't here.
Well, it's probably typo.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then, on the H item that dealt with the progressive squares, I think I vote, I abstained on that vote, instead of abstention, but I did abstain on that vote.
Okay.
I think it's under H. I believe it's under H, Ms. Becky? Yeah, number four on page four, I think. Alright, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thibodeau, for noting those corrections. Once again, all in favor of approval, acceptance of the minutes?
As amended.
As amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have a substitute motion to approve as amended. All in...
Second.
Second, Mr. Dr. Clujay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approved the remittance payment for July 2nd, Ms. Ellender?
I move that we approve remittance payment for July 15, 2021 invoices and the Treasury report of June 2021.
Make a motion.
Moved by Ms. Ellender, seconded by Mr. Lainer, to approve the remittance payment for July 15, 2021 invoices, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F?
Alright, I have a few here. First is item G1 on the agenda, it's an email dated Friday, July 9th. Chris, please table Gulf South Square re-division indefinitely. Thank you, Terrell.
I make a motion that we, uh, remove this table indefinitely as per...
As per the developer's request.
We have a motion by Dr. Clujay, seconded by Mr. Soudier to table item G1 as per developer's request indefinitely. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the second pertains to item G2. It's an email dated Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. Chris, we need to table UK re-division indefinitely until we receive Department of Health approval letter. Thanks, Terrell.
I make a motion that we table indefinitely as per the developer's request.
There's a motion by Dr. Clujay, seconded by Mr. Rogers, as per developer's request on item G2 to table indefinitely, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the third pertains to item G3 on the agenda, it's an email dated July 15th. Chris, please table this item indefinitely. The item will be resubmitted and presented before the Planning Commission at a later date, once the water line and fire hydrants have been installed. If you have any questions, do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Leonard Chauvin III.
Make a motion to table item G3 indefinitely as per the developer's request.
We have a motion by Dr. Clujay, seconded by Ms. Ellender to table item G3 indefinitely as per developer's request, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The last one pertains to item G4, it's a letter dated July 15th. Dear Chris, please let this letter serve as a request to allow the above item to remain on the table another month and not be considered at this month's meeting. The fire hydrant has not been installed yet and the Department of Health issue has not been resolved. Thank you, sincerely, Ken Rembert.
I make a motion to table item G4 to the next regular meeting as per the developer's request.
We have a motion by Dr. Clujay, seconded by Mr. Burgard, to table item G4 as per the developer's request until the next meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. No more? You done table?
No, I'm not. Under this iron yet. Nothing to do there. No old business, you're going straight to new business.
Okay. Item H, applications, new business. Number one, subdivision of a portion of property belonging to AM Dupont Corporation, Mr. Rembert? Hang on, let me get you on there.
Ken Rembert, representing AM Dupont Corporation. This property's located on St. Jean Charles Island down in the Punta Shana area. Dupont Corporation has some property down there, they have some camps on them that they've leased out for years, and they would like to create this little subdivision to allow the camp owners to buy the property under their camps. We have a few issues, and I've kind of made a little punch list. We've discovered that there's only a four-inch water line in front of this property, which fire hydrants are not allowed, and we've talked to the fire chief. He and I had in discussions about maybe putting in a dry hydrant in the, across the street in the little bayou. He doesn't seem to think that it's adequate enough to pull water from. He said even if we had a hydrant on that four-inch line, he just can't get enough water out of a four-inch line to fight a fire. But we're still in negotiations with maybe perhaps deepening the bayou in front of the property to put the dry hydrant, getting some length along the bayou and getting some depth. We'd like to maybe address that between now and the tech, the next meeting. We do have a sewer problem too, so we'll have to ask for a tabling of this matter a little later, after I can kind of explain a few other things. In placing the lines between the existing camps, we can't come up with that 50-foot by 50-foot box for buildings, but of course, these are already built, so we don't need that 50-foot, 50 by 50-foot box. We couldn't get them by running the lines between the camps. And of course, in coming up with the 12,000 square feet, we had to find additional area in the back, so we made some little slivers so they could get to the canal system in the back. They, they do have a little trail back there where they, they go to the rear. It only allowed us to have 18 and a half roughly feet instead of the normal 25 feet, but it's not going to be used to, it's just going to be used to pass over. So, we, you know, we're gonna, maybe the next month meeting, we'll ask for variance on those items. There is a, an awning on lot number seven, I believe it is, over the property line, and the owner of that camp has an agreement with the neighboring person to have that in that fashion, at least that's what he's told us. So, I wanted to point that problem out, where the building, not the building itself, but the awning or carport or something extends over the property line, and he has an arrangement with the neighboring person. I think he even pays his ad valorem tax each year. That's, that's the story I got from, from the landowner, from the camp owner. The, I guess, that's, those are the items, and if we get the thing ironed out with the fire chief, we'd like to see about proceeding with this. So, we'd like to have our public hearing and ask for tabling of this matter after the people have a chance to talk.
I got a question for a public hearing.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here on this matter? Come up, state your name and address for the record, ma'am?
Chief Sherrell Parfait-Dordor, 5057 Bayou Side Drive, Chauvin.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's okay, I'd like to take a minute to honor Father Rock Nakken. Thank you. Alright, so this is the first time for me, if it's okay with the board. Chief Albert Nakken of Ildes John Charles could not be here tonight. He apologizes. But he asked if I could please come in his place. I'm trying to pull up the email right now, this was kind of a rush. He asked if I could please read this to you. Thank you so much for being so patient. Alright, well, I don't want to keep anyone's time very long, and I know that you have a time limit, you have a meeting to run.
Well, I was gonna suggest that there was other people in the audience that wanted to speak, if you want them to go ahead while you try to pull up your email, that would might make things a little easier on you.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Is anyone here from, from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Come on up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Susan Blanchard.
Mm-hmm.
301 Rue Grand Chen, Thibodeau. My question is, if they put this on a back burner for another meeting, will there be another public hearing where we can voice our opinions depending on their findings, you know, about the canal and the water line, the water hydrant?
Yes.
Will there be another public hearing for us to voice our opinions?
Yes, ma'am.
That's my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak on this matter? Name and address, please.
Stephanie Nakken, 311 Cypress Avenue, Montague, Louisiana, 70377. I wanted to know where was the awning that you said that the people took the right?
Ma'am, ma'am, talking to the microphone.
I wanted to ask him where was the awning that the people, which, is it 521? Is 521? So it'd be the next one. Who gave you, can I ask him who gave him the right?
Is, is that your property?
That, yes. I'm the Augustine Dora Estate Stephanie Nakken.
Okay. Mr. Rembert?
Pass the real course.
Can you answer her question?
I've only repeated what was told to me.
Okay.
The gentleman that has the camp reported back to us that, that he was in touch with the landowner, and he had an agreement between the landowner to use that particular water property. That's, that was, that's what was, you know, conveyed to me, and I just repeated what was told to me.
Okay, and Ms. Dordor, you, you the owner, come back to the mic, please, you the owner of that property?
Well, it's a family thing, but we pay the taxes on it, so, and it's got my name one here, I don't know how this happened. Augustine Dora Estate Stephanie Nakken.
I got you, okay. And that, was that your only concern?
Yes.
Have you spoken to other family members?
No.
Regarding that issue?
No, because I got this, and I'm like, I don't know what's going on, so...
Yeah.
And I was trying to get other people to come, but can't get a hold of nobody.
Right, understand.
We're a good family.
Yeah. Other than what Mr. Rembert has expressed to us, that basically his knowledge of what was passed on to him, we really have no way of knowing as a possibility, one of your family members may have made an agreement with him?
Yeah, I'd like to know who that is, though.
Yeah, I would, I would probably suggest that you maybe get with Mr. Rembert and see if you can speak to the, to the guy that owns that lot and see who gave him that permission.
I'll go right by there.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Is, is anyone else here on any matters regarding pertaining to that? Okay, are you ready, chief? Come on up. We're gonna have to start over again with your name and address.
That's okay, thank you so much. Chief Sherrell Parfait-Dordor, 5057 Bayou Side Drive, Chauvin, Louisiana. And again, thank you for your patience and your kindness. Alright, and I apologize for the sunglasses, I have a migraine. Alright, so, Chief Albert Nakken of the Ildes John Charles Biloxi Chitimachachakta Tribe really wanted to be here this evening, but he couldn't, so he emailed me and sent me his statement and asked if I could please read it to you, if that's okay with you. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Albert Nakken. I have served as a traditional chief of the Ildes John Charles Biloxi Chitimachachakta Tribe since 1997. I want to share my questions and concerns about the sale of the Dupont Corporation campsite properties on IDJC, or Ildes John Charles. As everyone here should know, IDJC has been threatened with flooding due to a change in climate. As chief of our tribe, I led the effort to create a resettlement plan for our people so our tribe could remain together. Even though we had to move from IDJC, that has been our home since 1835. We have been called the first climate refugees. When the resettlement plan was approved and funded by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, we agreed to it based on our understanding that part of the agreement was that IDJC would be left to nature, meaning no improvements or services would be provided to IDJC over time, and it would ultimately be consumed by water. This includes our roads, our homes, and our historical burial sites. Also, road home, when they bought out our residence, the property had to go green. Nothing could be built, just let Mother Earth take over. However, now that the resettlement has been funded, we see improvements being made to our island roads and fishing piers with parking being built. Our school was recently shut down. We were told it didn't make sense to keep it open. I am so sorry. Chief Albert is my elder. And I can feel his pain through this. So, forgive me. We were told it didn't make sense to keep it open. We recently learned that our school is being sold to a sporting organization. It seems IDJC is slated to become a recreational sporting island. Of course, I'm here in Chief Albert's place tonight, and he says because the Dupont land is being sold as campsites. This is profoundly unsettling. Our tribe was strongly encouraged to leave our homes, and we were told that if we stayed, we'd have no help or services there. Now we're finding out that the land is being repurposed and seemingly redeveloped for private recreational use. By the way, the state hijacked our resettlement, and all the documents from the resettlement has been removed from the state website. It was a tribal resettlement, and now there is no mention of the tribe. Of course, I am here in Chief Albert's place, and as he says, to let the parish and others know that our tribe has serious concerns about these actions, and that we plan to look deeper into the legality and legitimacy of what is happening on IDJC. Signed, Albert P. Nakken. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Clujay?
Yes, Mr. Rembert?
Yes, sir.
We know that with the, the way our marshes work, that if they dig this out one time so that the fire hydrant can work, it's highly likely within however many years, and I'm not a sediment expert, that whatever they dug out's gonna be filled back in to where it wouldn't work again. So, you know, hopefully the fire department would take into consideration that this needs to be dug out on an ongoing basis in order to be able to provide fire protection for that area, not just one time. And I know you don't have the answer to that, but I'm just bringing up that as we table it.
We're gonna, I have a conversation with him, I expect, he expects me to call him either tomorrow or Monday, we're gonna talk about it.
Okay.
As he understands that the bayou itself might be attached to maybe where the, the water is drained, and I haven't seen it personally, but he did go down there and take a look at it, and he's, you know, he's afraid as it sets now, it might not be, might not contain enough water.
Right.
But should we deepen it out and make it a little longer to, you know, whole water that wouldn't be sucked out by pump, pumping the area, that perhaps we might convince him that it might be, you know, adequate. He said that really all the fires down there, he's got some hydrants, but he says he'd rather use the water on his truck than use the hydrants, you know?
Yeah.
You know, unless it's a big fire that...
Right.
He's afraid that even that might not be enough water to fight a large one.
Yeah, that, that is concern I have about the health, safety, and welfare of...
Sure.
These, these, if this were to go through, and, and again...
And I, oh, I'm sorry.
Again, you know, when you're talking, starting talking dredging in an area like this, I don't know if the Corps of Engineers needs to be involved in that or not to make the bayou deep enough.
Okay.
But that's a question that you can have with him, I'm just bringing that up now, so maybe when we come back, you would know the answer to that. The other thing is, is if you could give this lady the name of the guy who spoke to you, so he, she could actually ask him, because if, so he's paying the taxes to somebody else, and she's still paying the property taxes, I don't know where that money's going.
I intend to get a name and address and...
Alright, and also, if this continues to go through, we would need, as far as I'm concerned, we would need something written on the plat saying that that awning has been agreed to by certain people to stay there, because as you know, family members live and die, and the next one comes along may not like that awning there, and if it's not written on the plat that it's been an agreement to stay there, then, then there's gonna be, you know, a big fuss over all that, so that would need to be something that, as far as I'm concerned, would need to be noted on the plat and agreed to with the people whose names are in charge of agreeing to that kind of stuff on the plat. So we have a permanent record of that.
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Clujay. Third and final call, public on this matter. Motion to close?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Clujay, seconded by Mr. Rogers, closed public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
I recommend if, if we leave the public hearing open until the next meeting, because we told that other lady they'd be able to speak at public hearing until next meeting.
Well, there's that, but the items that Mr. Ken had mentioned about the discussions with the fire chief about having either a dry hydrant or draft site as an option, and I missed it, but that 50 by 50 box, I realize they can't meet that requirement, but both of those items require variances...
Right.
From you all, and those variances were not listed on the application, so you need to have another, call for another public hearing and renotice and all that anyway with those variances listed amongst that. So, we're continuing this public hearing, but what we'll do is we'll just get with Mr. Ken, and we'll have him change the sign on site so that it has the new date, because, because of these additions of the variances and stuff, I think we need to renotice.
In the right way.
So that would, that would be my recommendation, is to continue the public hearing.
Okay.
I make a motion, we continue...
Continue the public hearing until the next...
Regular meeting.
Okay, motion by Dr. Clujay, seconded by Mr. Soudier to continue as per staff recommendation to the next meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Do I need to ask for this to be tabled, or will it automatically be tabled?
No, we took care of that.
Okay. Thank you much.
We're done.
We hadn't tabled it yet.
To the, to the next meeting, then.
Continue the public hearing. We continue the public... I think that we're done. Okay, sounds good to me.
Thank you. Item two, subdivision revise lots 101 and 102, re-division of lots 101 through 107, Crescent Plantation belonging to Robert Champan. Is someone naming rec, naming address for the record, sir? Hold on, let me get your microphone on. Okay, go ahead.
Kim Knight, 410 South Van Avenue. I'm here to represent Mr. Robert Champan on a development on 143 Munson Drive. This is an existing property which is in the old part of Homer, near the Intracoastal and Homer Canal, formerly part of Crescent Plantation subdivision, where they had several lots that were existing, and the Intracoastal cut through the property over the years in which my client purchased property that included the rear portion and totaling six and a half acres. The development has an existing home that's on the structure, and what our client would like to do is build a new residence there. Being in Zone R1, we're only allowed single-family residential, so what we're attempting to get approved would be a reconfiguration of the existing lots to include the old home on one lot and to produce a, a new lot for new construction. We have sent out letters of, of availability to the utility companies in which we have responses, responses from communications, also electric and gas, and the Department of Health with a letter of no objection. What we do have existing here is an old, existing water line that, that reaches out to the property, and an old service line that, that services the old home. However, Waterworks is advising us to put a new section of water line in with a, a fire hydrant to service the property. And with that said, we don't have a letter of availability from Waterworks, and we're trying to negotiate for the fire hydrant. So, I guess in, in the end, we're gonna have to maybe table this as well indefinitely till we resolve the matter with Waterworks.
Dr. Clujay?
I have a question for you, please, sir. It looks like, and then I may be reading this wrong, but it looks like the road stops right at the edge of revised lot 101. And therefore, it does not go to revised lot 102. So there's no road access to lot 102, and actually, I don't know what you cross over, but somebody else's land to get into lot 101.
Yeah.
How do we solve that problem?
So, the public right of way still exists, but the development of Munson Drive never took it all the way to the Intracoastal, or when the Intracoastal came, it just was never developed, maybe it was shell-rolled at the time, you know, and then they developed on and stopped the concrete at that point. Mr. Munson owned all of that property, all of the lots that, that remained on... Mr. Munson owned all of that property, all of the lots that, that remained on through the other side of the Intracoastal as well. So the entrance to the properties that, that are there, the existing lots 101, 102, all the way through, you know, on through 107, if you will, um, was private ownership, and in a sense, he, he went off into the driveway and accessed the old home.
All right. Well, here's, here's what my concern is, just to share it with you. So let's say we reconfigure this to the new lot 101 and new lot 102. And let's say that ten years from now, uh, somebody else decides they want to buy a lot 102. Now, they don't have a road to get to lot 102. Because they can't get there from here. And it just so happens that the guy who's living in lot 101 doesn't like the fact that the people in lot 102 bought 102. So he's not gonna let them go to their house, because there's no road there. So as part of this, assuming it be tabled, as part of this, we may want to figure out how to extend the road to where he has road frontage into lot 102 as well. Or have some other way of a permanent right-of-way that's listed on the plat so that they can, lot 102, whoever lives there, if it's him, but nobody lives forever. So somebody else will eventually, that, that they'll be able to get to their house if they want to, if there's a squabble somewhere in the mix.
Understood. Uh, ju- just to note that the, the public right-of-way does extend all the way to the Gulf Intracoastal waterway.
They have the right-of-way, but they don't have any hard surface to ride on the right-of-way. So, you know, they either need to put a hard service somewhere, or if they put a private drive, hard surface, so they don't have to meet our, uh, parish standards for building the thickness of concrete. And they want to publicly take, I mean privately, take care of that hard service. It's written on the plat that they're gonna maintain any potholes that go in there. They're gonna maintain it when the garbage trucks come in to pick up the, uh, the garbage. And, and all of a sudden, now they've got a, a big hole in there that they're, they're not gonna be calling the parish going, you know, come fix our driveway. So we've, we've got to figure out some way that there's access to lot 102. And, uh, you know, and I understand there's a right-of-way, but, you know, just people ain't gonna be driving through the grass. So, you know, we just got to figure out how we're gonna do that. And that's why you get the big bucks, because you know exactly how to figure that out, so. But that's just my, my comment on that anyway.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, anyone here from the public? Second call public, third and final call public?
Motion to close?
Motion by Mr.?
We gotta close it first, the public hearing.
And this, this one is a little different.
Okay, motion to close by, by Mr. Thibodeau, second by Mr. Rogers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Administration?
Our recommendation would be to table indefinitely as per the developers' requests.
Okay.
Motion for staff recommendations, second?
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Thibodeau to table indefinitely as per staff recommendation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Actually, it's not as per staff recommendation, it's tabling as per the developers' request indefinitely.
Per the developer, per the developers' request indefinitely. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Staff report, Ms. Becky? Or Mr. Pulaski? I'm sorry.
Okay, so we've discussed, um, a roll call with regard to those who've completed the annual ethics training course as required by the state legislature and the parish harassment, discrimination, and adversity training for 2021. We can go through that roll call, but I know several, oh, it's the same? Okay, but, there you go, Becky did it. But you've all been given, um, a packet with, um, the forms necessary to fill out once you've completed the videos and completed the training. And then there's a USB jump drive in there that has the video on that. So if you could please, whenever you return those, be sure and return the USB jump drive as well as the signed forms. Thank you.
Item J, administrative approv, administrative approvals, one through ten?
I make a motion to acknowledge the administrative approvals.
Motion by Dr. Kluch, second by Ms. Ellon, that approved the administrative approvals, one through ten. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item K, committee report, subdivision regulation review committee? I didn't even get to highlight you.
We didn't meet.
Okay, gotcha. Item L, any, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm just seeing y'all lights. Uh, who I got on first? Uh, let me see. Go, go ahead, Mr. Burghardt.
Can we plan for another meeting?
When's the April?
The week before August 18.
Okay.
It'll be, um, August 12.
August 12, you said?
At 3:30, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The sewer line work between the Laurel Bridge and Highway 316, which is the Bayou Road, that's on the northbound side, on the West Park side. I, I believe it's completed, but as I walked the pedestrian path, uh, day before yesterday, too much mud and, and other stuff has been left on, on the pedestrian path. And also, there are some faces, there are some, some, some parts that are cracked and have not been repaired. They did some repair where they had dug up and replaced, but there are other parts that are still in need of repair. And I, I don't know if the MPO will be meeting soon, and I guess I thought about going and bringing that, that stuff myself. But I'll ask you to share that with the state officials who oversee that project or oversaw it. And, and they need to make a walkthrough there, because some of the sidewalks, and that was on the west side where the work was, some of it is left damaged.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau.
Um, I want to ask, talk to engineering, but remind me to come back to you about that. So the work that's being done for that sewer line, the extension of the sewer line is for the new aisle, the resettlement subdivision, correct?
Yes.
And that's, that work is being done by the, the, the developer's contractor associated with that? So the developer in this case being the state, Louisiana Land Trust, and the contractor being, uh, I think it's BET?
I would assume that that's who's doing the sewer work.
So, so at some point, that, that application's coming back before this planning commission for final approval, and that would be a punch list item.
Yes, it would.
But we don't want to necessarily wait till whenever that day comes to get the mud cleared off the sidewalk and, but, uh, so we can handle getting these items to their attention, so maybe they can address them now versus when they're ready to come before at final? Thank you, Joan. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to mention to you, I had a call this morning regarding a, a grant program that's, um, uh, Department of, uh, oh, USDA, sorry, USDA grant. But we, we got to talking about that, and representatives from the USDA grant program will be coming into town to meet with us to go over this particular grant application. But we're tying, in the discussion, we started bringing it back to the comprehensive master plan and some of the goals and objectives. And community sewer in rural areas is one of those goals and objectives. So we're hoping that while we have the ear of those representatives, that we can talk to them about expanding our community sewer to some of these areas.
If, if it's not out of order, would you invite me to that meeting?
I can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Kluch?
Yeah, I have a little, uh, integrity problem that I'm suffering from. I understand that this project to move the people from Isle de Jean Charles is a national project of which we are participating in as a state, of which we are participating in as a parish. But I also understand how it looks now that we are telling people they can't live there, they have to get out, because we can't maintain the safety and integrity of their, of where they live. And yet, we're gonna turn this into a commercial, nice camp, high-expensive sporting area. And, uh, just for the sake of airing it out, I don't, I know you can't do anything. But, uh, I just have a real integrity problem if this is the way this is going. Because we're telling them they need to leave, because this is gonna be converted back to the sea. You know, you're gonna be, it's gonna be a beach before long. And now, all of a sudden, we're looking at trying to get fire protection for camps out there that we, um, and I know they've been there for a hundred years or whatever, but it just, it just seems like we're not being the best we can be. We're not being honest, uh, with what we're, we're sharing and saying. And so, uh, I appreciate the fact of, you know, these people, they're, the land that they have is a part of who they are. And now they're being told, leave off of this, you're not a part of it anymore. And yet, they're watching other people come in and subdivide to put fishing camps there. And, and I don't know who we talk to, I don't know who we, we say this to. But it's just not right, as far as I'm concerned. And I, I think, uh, as a part of this committee, I just want to, want to say that publicly. I just don't feel that that's right, that we're moving. I know that it may be economically not a bad idea. It may be sound in terms of making money, but it ain't right to move people off their land and then turn around and make it a sport, sporting area. So I, I just, uh, I have an issue with that. So just my comment.
Just not to get myself into trouble. But, but, uh, no, I, and I, I completely understand that comment. You know, you, the, the, there are those improvements on the, the rocks being placed on the south side of Island Road. Wildlife and Fisheries did come in and, and put those fishing piers in. Now, I mean, those two, just from being on the, um, you know, in the know, so to speak. I mean, Wildlife and Fisheries had that program separate and apart from the resettlement project. And they put those there because people do fish along Island Road. And, and if you've been there, it is a safety nightmare. Cars parallel parked from one end to the other, and kids
Right.
darting back across, and, and there, it's a drag strip between it. Um, and then the, uh, the, the, the rocks on the road, I mean, on the other side, most of the damage that happens to that road comes from overtopping when we have a strong south wind. Um, there are still structures that will remain on that island after the resettlement project is closed out. So the intent there was to protect those, that infrastructure and those structures that are still out there. The vo, the, the program is a voluntary buyout program. Or, or relocation and buyout. So for those people who participated, their properties will remain open space. They'll be deed restricted if they do have a structure. And I'm only saying these things just really for the benefit, so that things don't get misinformation out there. But, um, if they have a structure already, they can continue to keep that structure.
That was gonna be my question.
They just can't make substantial improvements to it. So they can even make repairs. They just can't make substantial improvements or additions to it. Now, for those people, um, who, maybe they own the property, but there was no structure on it at all anyway. So when they move off, I mean, sorry, when they relocate and that property is closed out, it's forever deed restricted, so nobody can come in and build a camp on there, a new camp. The camps that we had tonight before you, those are pre-existing, and none of those camps are participants in the program. You know? And then there's still a marina on the
But the comment, the comment that, that she made about the, uh, the school, saying it's gonna be repurposed for, uh, a fishing
I, that's the first I've heard of that. I don't even know where the school, old school building is on the island.
I'm not sure myself. I've been there many times, but I've
Yeah, I, I did reach out to the state just to ask them if they had any concerns or comments about this. And the comment that I got back was that they didn't have a concern about these, because none of these properties or, or campsites were participants in their program.
But they were offered, they were offered to participate.
Well, no, they don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Are these exactly on Island Road or?
Right before.
On Island Road, about halfway down on the left side. On the Portisland side, east side.
Mr. Burghardt?
Yes. So you're saying that they couldn't have any substantial improvements? Uh, that would only then classify to the area that is part of the program, not substantial improvements to the camps that are in focus for us in conversation?
Correct. Or if there was a property that, say, doesn't have a camp on it now, nor was it a property that was part of the program of the, you know, buyout program? It was owned by, say, you had a, a piece of property down there that you bought ten years ago, and it's just vacant. And then you sell it, and the buyer wants to come, or you yourself want to come in and build an, an, a brand-new camp on there. You could do that.
And, and who separates the line of what's part of the program and what's not in the program? Is that Terrebonne Parish?
Well, it's, the state has a, an application process. It's, it's a voluntary program, so. But you have to meet certain eligibility requirements to be a participant in that program. And those, um, have to do with, are you a, an island resident now? Or were you at the time of Hurricane Isaac?
Right.
Or were you a resident before that? I mean,
Right.
it's, that's where I, I don't want to say too much, because I'm not the best person to answer that question. I, I would defer something like that to the state, but
You've answered my question. The state has authority on what fits into that program and those requirements.
Right.
Not us.
Right. And each participant, the, the property, once it's closed out, I mean, there's a meets and bounds description of each lot that will, you know, that's part of that program. So that, all of that, the deed restrictions, all that stuff, it'll all get recorded at the courthouse once everything's done. So, you know, a hundred years from now, um, if there's anything left and somebody wanted to go buy it, they could. I mean, they could, but they can't do anything with it.
So just for clarity, our board does not have the authority to make those decisions.
That's right. Just, and this kind of harkens back to the, when the resettlement, the new subdivision was being created. I mean, we had a room full of people who had questions about the program and understanding it's a very passionate and, and difficult subject. But at the end of the day, this planning commission, I mean, you're, you've got the subdivision regulations, and that's where the line pretty much ends.
Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah. One who has accepted the relocation, owns property on, on the island, but doesn't have a structure on it, they retain ownership?
Yes, sir.
Now, could, could, could an RV or something, we can park there, probably go?
I don't know what the deed restrictions, how far it goes.
Okay.
Um, because, you know, parking, what is, what does the state consider? Y, 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 you know, um, like, maybe they'll, they would, I'm just, a what-if, if they had allowed them to park an RV there. But would you be able to get hookups, water, power, sewer? I can tell you that the LA SAFE program, which is, that, that, in our, that national competition, that, the, the resettlement and the two LA SAFE programs, they all came out of the same pot of money. It was a Rockefeller grant that got administered through HUD, Department of Interior through HUD. It was a national competition. The state submitted, and they won. They got ninety million bucks, basically. Half went to the resettlement, the other half went to the LA SAFE program with, got spread out between seven coastal parishes. The LA SAFE buyout program that was the Terrebonne Parish, and these programs were basically chosen by the people through an extensive public hearing and meeting process. But the project that was selected for Terrebonne, one of them, was the buyout, which is a voluntary program. But it's only resident, it's only open to residents, who, or folks whose primary residence is outside of the morgue, answer to the Gulf system. So if they participate, they will be given, you know, an appra, they have their property appraised, they will get that appraised value. And there are some incentives to stay in Terrebonne Parish and other things. So they might, they may be able to get a little bit more than the appraised. But once they take that and it gets closed out, the parish owns the property, the structure on it gets demolished. And we can then in turn sell it, but it's deed restricted. And the only, it's for recreation, so, and recreation, they'll let us have
You could put, you could build a dock, you could build an open boat shed. You could have an RV with an open, like walls, no, no walls, but just the roof, like a RV cover. You could have a water hookup and you can have a power hookup, but you can't get sanitary sewer. And you can't put, like the RV site, you couldn't put a, um, concrete or asphalt down. It can only be pervious. Well, unless you want to spend the money and put down pervious concrete or something. But that's, if those are the deed restrictions they're thinking about for the LA SAFE. That, pretty good indicator that they may be doing something similar to that for the resettlement, but I can't say for certain.
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Lonner?
I got a couple of questions, Chris. I misunderstood that. I was looking at it from the other side of Island Road. I thought it was on the Pointe Shant side. So those lots were, there's some that were not in there? Right, but I thought it was on the, uh, the main road.
Okay. So this is Island Road. Okay. The, the fishing pier, Pointe Shant is over here to, off, to the right, off the screen. East, north is up.
How many more lots is there besides these?
I mean, it starts, Pointe Shant, uh, 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 the addresses start on the three hundred block and this is the five hundred block.
So there's other camps.
So there's other camps on Island Road besides this because I go down there a good bit fishing and I didn't think there was that many camps. I thought.
There's, there's, there's quite a few.
So my other question is, the people that are wanting to buy these camps are, why now? Like.
What, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I wish Mr. Kim was still here, but it sounded to me like all of these camps are, I think this is actually in the application. That they're, the camps are owned. They just lease the.
So they're wanting to sell the land.
So, so I'm a, and, and I.
So DuPont wants to unload the properties and the, the person that they're going to first is the person who's leasing the land from them.
Right, which I thought would be part of the tribe members.
That island is not, you know, limited to just, I mean, I would think the majority of the people who. Live or own properties on the island, but that's just, that's just.
So, okay, all right, I'm, it's kind of making, so these people are not tribe members and they're gonna be owning their property, or they could be, we don't know.
But it's a voluntary relocation program. They, they don't have to leave.
Gotcha.
Yeah, well, like the woman who came up and spoke, her primary residence was in Thibodeau.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Do we have any other commissioners' comments? All right. No comments from the chair? Any comments from the public? Gone once? Gone twice?
They're gone.
Don't see anybody? Go three times. Motion to close public? Motion by Dr. Cluce, second by, uh, Mr. Lonner. All in favor signify by saying aye. We are, any opposed? We are adjourned.